Wait a little bit. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Charlton Board of Selectment, November fifteenth, 2022, 6:30 PM. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first thing on the agenda is we're going to go through the warrant approval as needed and approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October twenty-fifth, 2022. I would accept the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Chair's is aye. Unanimous. Community Relations Announcements, open forum.
Charlton Public Library, pre-K yoga with Linda Davis. It's Wednesday, November sixteenth, from eleven fifteen to eleven forty-five. That's at the Dexter Hall. That's for ages two and a half to five years old. The library asks for the caregivers to be present during that class. Twin and teen creative writing group, it's Wednesday, November sixteenth, three thirty to four fifteen, at the community meeting room. That's for best for ages from nine to eighteen. Middle grade book club, that's Thursday, November seventeenth, six thirty to seven fifteen, Storytime Room. And this is for the grades five to eight. Teen craft night and advisory board meeting is Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, and that's from five to five forty-five at Community Meeting Room. They will meet you, discuss the teen programming for your library, make some crafts, and earn an hour of community service. Household Hazard Waste Day, Saturday, December third, 2022, and that's from nine to one PM. Casella Waste Services Facility, which is located at 165 Beersford Road in Southbridge. Proof of residence is required, and our free vouchers are at Board of Health. Town of Charlton Tree Lighting and Festival of Lights Parade is Sunday, December fourth, 2022. Parade starts at six PM and goes from CBS to the town common.
And do I believe David had another?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Through the chair, holiday time, I always run some kind of charity looking for donations. This year, instead of toys, the thought was, and what we're going to try and do, is gather suits, sport coats, and slacks for men, dresses, skirts, blouses for women, and shoes. I have one charity already lined up, which is called Dress for Success. They will only take the women's clothes. I'm currently working with someone else at Worcester State University to try and arrange, make arrangements there. If that doesn't work out, I have a few other options for the men's clothes and any other women's clothes. The reason we're doing that this year instead of toys is that collecting clothes for work interviews would help those in need who are trying to get back on their feet, maybe need clothes to interview or for a new job to get started, and also would help young students who are graduating, who don't have jobs or income yet, to give them interview clothes and work clothes. So if anyone would like to help out, we'll be taking donations starting now through December thirty-first. You can drop anything off at the Selectmen's Office. Again, we're looking for men's and women's work clothes, things, sport coats, suits, dresses, and shoes. So thank you in advance for anyone who wants to help and provide these donation clothes for a good cause.
That's a really good idea. David, I like, yeah, I like that. That's a really good idea. And so they can just bring them into the Selectmen's Office and?
Drop them off with Andrew or Mary or Carrie.
And there's something about if you're a young guy going, a young guy or a young woman going for your first job, you get a blazer on, you feel a little?
You're feeling a little better. It didn't work for me, but I hope it works somewhere else.
No, I like it. Okay, I like it. Okay, and we are moving, if that's the end of, nobody's on open forum?
Last request for that. Andrew, can we, through the chair, can we make a little post on the website too, so everyone knows they can drop off at our office?
We'll coordinate with our office.
Thank you.
And is nobody on the waiting list for open forum, I think it, I'm looking over behind us. Nobody in the queue?
Nope.
So now we're moving on to appointments, and Andrew?
All right. First appointment is for per diem dispatchers. Police Chief Dowd is asking the board to appoint Damian Brer, Lamaris Rosario, and Holly Boyle as per diem dispatchers for the Charlton Police Department. These appointments were effective November seventh, 2022, and you're asking for many appointments?
So moved and welcome to the chief.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Chair's is aye.
Next, news for traffic constables and also designation of special municipal employee. Attached is a request from Lindair, Human Resources Director, asking the board to appoint the following employees to traffic constables for the Charlton Police Department. Paul Morelli, Sean Tankersley, Nicole Prey, Carolyn Wilson, Tanya Martin, Amy Codren, and Elizabeth Rivera. These are new positions that were created to help with the need for details, but they will also need to be appointed as special municipal employees. I recommend the board make the appointments as requested.
Chairman, make a motion to appoint the names as traffic constables and special municipal boards.
Second.
Second for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair's is aye.
Last appointment is for the DCRSD study select person. Attaches a letter from Shepherd Hills Principal, Darren Elwell, recommending the appointment of grade eleven student Harry Kenyon as, or Keenan, as the DCRSD non-voting student representative for the 2022-2023 school year. I recommend the board make the appointment.
So moved and welcome, Harry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair's is aye. Welcome, Harry.
Is Baycott's gonna do the same this year?
Uh, we're still waiting for an answer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we're way ahead of schedule, can we possibly take Jared and get him done?
No, I thought we were gonna make Jerry wait until the very, no, absolutely we can.
I think we got twelve minutes before our?
So Jerry, we're talking?
So basically, so following that Stafford Street corridor study that we had commissioned, the town had engaged CMRPC to conduct the traffic count analysis to pursue the four-way intersection born under the Uniform Traffic Control Device Standard. I outlined what the standard is, and essentially CMRP's result of the finding was that under criteria A wasn't applicable to the consideration. Under criteria B, it was met, that warrant was met at a total of fourteen angle crashes over the study period where the standard is six. With criteria C, based on the data collected, this part was not met, CMRP C found that only seven hours of the day had three hundred vehicles entering the intersection, which was an hour short of what the requirement is to meet the warrant. And under criteria C two, based on the data collected, this part was also not met because there wasn't enough volume entering the intersection from Center Depot Road to meet the warrant. So we did reach out to Mass DOT District Two to discuss the findings of the survey, you know, if any consideration should be given based on the road geometry, traffic counts, traffic data, and also the findings from the NEST. But they advised that a more favorable recommendation was basically pointed back to their review letter that they had drafted in 2020, which most were implemented by the DPW at that time. They did preface to say that Stafford Street and City Depot Roads, being non-state roads, are ultimately under the discretion of the town as to whether or not to proceed with any other four-way warrant. So Jerry's here to address any questions the board has relative to how we proceed.
So, Mr. Chairman? So I think the recommendation, Jerry, based upon this, is that they're just saying, look, can we move that stop sign line forward a little more on both sides? And then we can monitor and see how it goes, or at least that's how I read it.
Okay. I disagree with that move. That's my stand on that. I obviously am. I think if you can visualize the intersection, if you're traveling on Stafford Street and entering the intersection headed west towards the city. If you look down the hill, that stop sign is set back a ways. And I like it where it's set. I didn't, that's where it's been for a while. That's not the reason against the move. The reason is, is that that stop sign is moved forward. I don't think the vehicles coming from the Spencer side on thirty-one are at the stop in time for that intersection. But it also gives you the, you envision that vehicle. A lot of people don't stop until they get to that sign. So people halfway down that hill headed towards Charlton City side are gonna wonder, are they, or aren't they? Right now, that's not an issue. I mean, they're well stopped and they're entering into the intersection. As you're actually taught in, you know, drivers that you stop at the stop sign, you enter in and look. So I don't see a reason for it. That's my personal opinion. If there's a case for it from the board, you know, I believe the words add where it should be. I don't really move any of the signs. Again, that's my recommendation.
I mean, I think, I'm sorry, Steve.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, Jerry, I mean, for me at least, I think, for whatever reason, people don't stop there. Because that's the only reason I come up with why people, why there are the number of accidents that happen there. So it's either, it's either they're not stopping, or they are stopping and pulling out unnecessarily. In my opinion, I'd like to see if something else could be tried and that we can monitor it. But you get the same complaints we do about this, and obviously there's been some very, very severe accidents there.
And personal for myself also.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so it's one of those?
I do want to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And if that's a suggestion that you would like me to move that forward, tell me how much, and I'll do it. I mean, I'm not gonna take a stand on it and say that I, you know, all I can say is I disagree with the theory that's being projected that they're more at the stop if it's fifteen feet forward. I don't buy that. I know most of the accidents have been just not stopping.
Agreed.
That's where the accidents have happened, not, and I believe the approach of stopping where it exists and inching out into the intersection, now that the sightlines are so improved looking east on, and they really are.
Absolutely.
It's much better, the stop, the flashing stop signs that we used to all, the LED overhead lights are more efficient for all we're trying to perceive. Oh, yeah.
Jerry, what about the rumble, not, I don't know what you call it, like rumble strips or whatever you, basically cuts in the pavement that have that vibration to warn people to stop? I mean, I think, again, I'm not speaking for the board, but I think in general, we're just trying to find something different that might help, and obviously with your experience and expertise, you know, like, do you have any other ideas that, that seems, that Mass DOT and/or CMRPC would just reject outbreak? Because I don't think status quo works anymore. I mean, I get where you're coming from, but I think we gotta try some.
Well, I think we have, we have tried some. We've shown, there's a lot of improvement in the sightlines on that intersection. I believe that may have led to some of it. If you're asking me what I think personally, I don't believe I'm any more qualified than you folks are to make a suggestion on what you think may work. I'll log phones in cars, okay? That's what I say works. I'll log them, tighten and enforce it. That's what I say works. I mean, that's really, that's my opinion. These little moves, they're feel-good measures. It may help though. I, you know, moving stop sign forward, yeah, it just, it presents a different issue for me because I really have come down that hill many times, and you see that car so far back. It's not a normal intersection where you don't see it till the end. You can see that, it's a big radius turning on Depot. And you can see that for a while, and you don't know if they're gonna stop or not. And on that hill, it's not the greatest thing to have cars, getting their brakes, slowing down, going into the intersection. That's what I feel we have.
Mr. Chairman? I, I mean, we did, we did get a state grant for $25,000 standard engineering study done. Engineering came back, it was, the study came back, it was pretty comprehensive. He recommended, in short, he recommended a four-way stop sign and then later down the road, rotary. But regardless of that, it's, it's super expensive. I don't know where, and when the state came into it, I think, was their recommendation tied to their, so that they're not gonna give any money towards it? It would be on us, no matter what we did. I don't, I'm not even, I, I?
Yeah, I mean, what they're basically saying is they can advise, you know, as to whether or not it meets their definition as how they would apply it to a state road. But they're saying that it not being a state road, it's outside of their jurisdiction. So they're essentially deferring to the town itself, that whatever the board decides to do is what can be done.
Someone, a local hauler in town told me, like, oh, that's, that's, a four-way stop sign is a ridiculous idea. If I'm coming down that hill, even on a dry day, in a dump truck, loaded, I'm not gonna stop if there's a four-way stop. I'm like, well, you might be going too fast. Right? What would you do? What would you do?
Well, my response to that is, I'm in the court of that trucking home.
Yeah.
As a DPW, it operates a lot of heavy trucks.
Oh, yeah.
You put that intersection, I can tell you making a four-way stop only would increase, in my estimation, the danger of that intersection. It is not gonna create a situation, not only heavy trucks. You know, at the time, that's a nightmare now, until you wanna, I mean, financially, it's not feasible to reconstruct that intersection. I don't see that happening in the alley, the cost would be. Because basically, the slope of that hill is distorted. That tells the whole story. And I think the way it's set up now is really, as much as you can do, you have stuff, you know, my trucks can't stop on Center Depot and walk that hill. They have to go straight across to Center Depot, or they gotta go down, turn around, get a start to go off. I'm talking sloppy conditions.
Oh, yeah.
But if you have cars coming over that, and all down to the steep section, it's slippery. They start hitting their brakes, it's a four-way stop, and they're not sure if they're gonna have red or? There's other situations that occur when cars are unsure what they're gonna do, and that will just increase that, I believe. I don't see a four-way stop increasing safety on that.
I think part of the study is, what he talked about was, was the, it was that intersection and the intersection near Brookfield Roads and Stafford Street. Both of those were above federal guidelines on what they?
They're considered high crash, so.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, but high impact, but they're more, they're not rear-ending accidents. They're more, they end up being T-bones or something more, something more drastic. So you're trying, I mean, if it, again, you're right, you're right. You don't know any, we certainly don't know any more than you do, outside of practicality, but, but if, but if you, if you try to do something to avoid, to avoid the T-bone accidents or the cross accidents, rear-end accidents for sure.
I was just gonna say, for starters, I agree with Jerry, I think on virtually every point. I think it was actually the state masked up to come back with their recommendations re-implemented after the consultant and state all came back again. The same recommendations, we just paid, we got the same answers what we already did. You know, a lot of people, and it might have even been masked up, that agreed, four-way doesn't work there. It's actually gonna create a bigger issue and more dangerous than it is now. I don't think that rotary, and I agree with Jerry, and that's not saying it wouldn't work. I think financially, that's not feasible, at least not in today's Charlton. As far as moving a stop sign, I'm not opposed to it, but I agree with Jerry. We're gonna move a stop sign just so it looks like we're doing something for the sake of looking like we're doing something, knowing it's meaningless. So to Jerry's point, if I move a stop sign five feet forward, you're not gonna stop at it. You don't care if it's where it is, or if it's five feet, we're trying to be further forward. You're still not gonna stop at it.
That's why you can't be?
We're not, we're just, to Jerry's point, we're gonna move a stop sign just because it makes it look like we're doing something. I'm not saying we shouldn't do things. If you wanna move it, I'm not opposed to it. I'll go for it. I just think it's not gonna do anything.
I think it was more of a moving of stop lines, though.
I think, but Jerry's point?
They fall inside by law. Stop line is good as a stop sign.
Right, so you're moving that up, and to Jerry's point, now someone's coming even faster and applying their brakes even later because it's further up. So someone coming down may think that they're gonna run it, even though they're not. And if they're not gonna stop now, they're not hitting their brakes or applying their brakes to their even closer to the intersection, maybe even a bigger risk. So I'm not saying don't do it. I'm not saying don't do anything. I'm just thinking that I'm not smart enough to have the appropriate answer. But if we're gonna do something, and we can't do a rotary, and the stop signs just feel good, if we're gonna take other measures, we need to, I think, find out what measures would actually have an impact that are affordable, and there may not be one today.
There was, there was?
Phil had said something about like rumble strips or something. How expensive is that? And if, I mean, if my car stops moving around, I'm gonna slow down, right? So?
Well, I think there's one of two assumptions around why, what's causing accidents down there. One is that they're just, as Jerry said, they're just flying because they're distracted. They're flying right through that stop sign and not paying any attention. The second is that they're stopping, pulling out thinking the other people coming down are going to stop, which they don't because it's obviously, they don't have to. So my thought, and again, it's completely prelim, would be to say, try moving that stop sign forward the five feet. But probably even more importantly, put some, and Jerry, I'm not using the right term there, like, you know, like that, that?
I know what you mean.
Yeah, exactly. Basically to say, hey, that's an interesting feeling. Oh, look, a stop sign.
Pay attention.
Yeah.
What about other warning signs, you know, further down the road saying, you know, dangerous intersection ahead or something like?
We have so many signs up there now, people should know.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, Jerry, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
But we actually have, if you come from the center to the intersection, we have a four-way ahead. We've got the flashing stop sign. I actually have two others.
We don't have a four-way ahead because it's not a four-way stop. If I pull up there?
It's an intersection ahead. It shows.
Yeah, four-way intersection.
An intersection, not a four-way stop, if that's what I said on.
Yeah, well, but?
But even better, from the Depot side, we have a flashing intersection sign back, two hundred feet. Before that, we have an intersection sign, big, bright, new red sign, red and yellow. You, you know, I can understand your feelings on it, and I agree with you, but I think we've already addressed that. That's weekend. We have a flashing sign on Stafford coming to the hill. They're all solo. That's a downfall. I'll tell you now that if you don't have the right setup for any solo signs, they're hard to. But, I mean, we put LEDs in on the flashing overheads, they're brighter than ever. They always make, that's my priority if they're out, but it just?
I wonder if the people, when I approached that, that intersection on Center Depot Road, either going north or south, my assumption already for some reason is it's a four-way stop. It just feels like it should be. So are people thinking? Because there are four-way stops all over town. You see them, you see them on Wester Road and you see them in Uperville.
Well, I think definitely unique to this, because you have that hill. That just offers so many more dangers. I mean, we're assuming that everyone is familiar with that intersection. All it takes is one day to come through that from Stafford.
You're right. If you pay attention, it's fine. It's a great, if you do pay attention, but it's the people that aren't.
If there's anything we can do, I'm all in on.
So at least for discussion, I'm gonna make a motion that we move the stop signs forward in a reasonable amount, Jerry, that doesn't cause too much?
Forward means back. So forward's just, it's gonna, this is the intersection, it's gonna go, they're gonna go further back. So you're gonna see them first.
No, closer, closer to the intersection.
Close to the intersection.
But, but also put in that asphalt, I'm gonna call it asphalt cutting, because I don't know what the right term is.
Well, when you go into the intersection, the only thing that you could put is like a rumble strip type thing.
Yeah.
But to put that across the road at the stop sign where you would?
Oh, no, 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 that would come, that would come before to basically make sure people are aware that, oh, yeah, I really have to stop here, for those people who are either not paying attention or who have never driven it before. So we're really just talking around making incremental improvements on, on Center Depot and leave Stafford as is.
That is the, that's the important.
So if that's the case, why wouldn't we leave the stop sign where it is, since five feet further up doesn't make a difference? And leave it where it is, but put in the rumble strips so that, because again, if you're not gonna stop for it here, you're not stopping for it here either. So you leave it where it is, but put in the rumble strips ahead of it. So regardless of where it is, you're alerting someone, hey, wake up, there's a stop sign in front of you. That seems to me the more, the bigger change to actually try and?
You would have to, you'd have to calculate how fast they're going and how far back to put their rumble strip.
I'm sure we could figure that out relatively, I mean, because?
If you're going fast and it's icy, closer the stop sign is to the intersection, the less likely you're actually gonna stop before you go in the middle.
I think we're completely overcomplicating this, to be honest with you.
I like, I like the accurate of the strip sign, makes me happy.
All right, how about this? I make a motion that we start to put in, that Jerry, come up with something that comes up with that, we like cut the asphalt on like Center Depot to make sure people are aware that like stop signs are coming. And then, and then we'll monitor and then we'll like reassess in the spring.
Do we have like a price cap for this, something like that?
Can I have the mill, mill?
Mill, thank you, yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's, it's a game changer as far as the cost. I mean, just sitting there, watching the conversation and listening, and I never really thought much about this rumble strip type thing. But I think what would be effective is possibly keeping the stop sign where it is and have them like ten feet apart for like four times.
Works for me. Done.
Can we get it close? I mean, that's an eye-opener.
Well, well, there's one of the, there's one other topic I wanted, because Andrew and I talked about this a couple months ago. And I think you've actually brought the idea up. It might have been an engineering study, and I asked you what he meant by that. But by, on Center Depot Road coming south, bring the, bring the white lines on the side of the road in a little bit closer?
There are, there are none now.
Right. There are none now. Bring them in a little closer. When people's eyesight see that and it makes them, it trains them to think, all right, something's coming up.
So paint white lines as like traffic coming?
We're going into a funnel here. I probably ought to pay attention, put my phone down and hang up on my wife or whatever, you know, whatever's going on at the time.
Why don't we look at that one in the spring? Because you can't paint that now, Jerry.
It won't happen until the spring. This milling in the road may not happen until the spring, to be honest.
Yeah, well, it's got snow tonight, so.
Fine. And that gives us time to also find out what the actual cost of the budget.
So it sounds like, yeah, and that, and you're reminding me, Jerry, because there aren't any one now. And if they were, it would give a little bit of a walking lane, and it would tell, it would train people to say, hey, maybe they're gonna pay attention here to something.
All I say is that if we could do the milling, which I know is gonna be almost, it'd be very difficult, Jerry. If you had the time to try to do it this year, that would be great, but, but I also get, you also have another forty-seven other priorities that you do.
Well, the safety intersection is one of my priorities.
Yeah, no, no, I get it.
I'll, I'll start working on that tomorrow morning. See what I can?
All right. So anyway, my full motion was, at least for now, keep the stop signs where they are with the lines and use Jerry's idea around like every ten feet to forty feet, or whatever Jerry thinks makes the most sense on Center Depot. Do you think we need them on Stafford?
No.
No, because I think that that would actually cause more problems if you put them in Stafford.
Probably the Center Depot headings coming into the intersection. That's the, that's the bad.
So anyway, that's my motion.
I'll say.
For discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Jerry, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good time. And I apologize to National Grid, I assume? Nope. National Grid, just behind us. We have a six forty-five poll hearing, Saundersdale Road.
Attached will find a request from Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, requesting permission to install one SO pole on Saundersdale Road. Also attaches a public hearing notice that was sent to the abutters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the police department and DPW superintendent. No comments or concerns that they will see. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the public hearing notice as sent to the abutters. I recommend the board approve the request.
Ready that?
Yep.
Down next?
You better read that. The Charlton Board of Select will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November fifteenth, 2022, at six forty-five PM at the Charlton Senior Center, Thirty-Sixth Main Street, Charlton, Mass. To act on a request from Mass Electric Company, DBA National Grid, requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fissures, including necessary sustaining, protecting fissures along and across the following public way, Saundersdale Road. National Grid to install one SO pole on Saundersdale Road, beginning? National Grid to install one S O pole on Saundersdale Road, beginning at point approximately ninety feet southwest from the center line of the intersection of Dresserville Road and continuing approximately twenty feet, twenty-five feet in a north direction, install a thirty-five foot plus three pole on number one one Saundersdale, the corner property of two ninety Dresserville Road and number two Saundersdale Road. To remove the aerial trespass from existing guide poles and add new service to Dresserville Road. They are also asking for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, wires, and other reception public ways for purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing, just distributing purposes. Anyone who wishes to be heard of this matter should appear on the date as specified to make arrangements in.
Right. So Mr. Chairman, uh, through you, if there's anyone either online, uh, on Zoom or in the audience who wants to speak on it?
Anybody?
Looks like no. As I said, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, request.
Please second the motion.
All in favor? Aye. Chair says aye.
Right back. Let's go.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Don't show my return.
Now we are on, moving on to the tax classification hearing at seven P M.
All right, you are scheduled to hold the tax classification during tonight at seven o'clock. The Board of Assessors have provided you with the information to help you in making a decision on whether to establish different tax rates or to continue to tax all classes of property at the same rate by adopting a factor of one. There are four items you will be asked to act in order to set the tax rate, tax rate, small commercial exemption, residential exemption, and the open space discount. Board of Assessors will be present to review the material and answer any questions that you may have. Chairman should open the hearing by reading the notice of public hearing.
Town of Cheltenham, notice of public hearing. The Cheltenham Board of Select will hold a tax classification public hearing in the Senior Center, thirty-seven Main Street, Cheltenham, Mass. The Zoom webinar, um, you can see the blue tab, passcode zero six one four one six, phone access six four six five five eight eight six five six on Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. The purpose of this hearing is to determine whether different or uniform tax rates of taxation will be applied to the various classifications of real estates. The Board of, Board of Assessment will be available at the hearing to answer any question that you may have. Input, um, input from taxpayers will also be welcome during the hearing.
Thank you.
How are you?
Aye.
All right, you got my packet?
I do.
Seemed good, well.
Yeah, nice job on this.
Nice job.
Yeah, thanks my life much easier.
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody have any specific questions you'd like to address?
Simple questions, mostly for everyone watching. So on the four items, the assessors' recommendation on tax rate and the exemption, both exemptions and the discount, I'm going to assume that the recommendation is still a single tax rate. But for everyone at home, can you give the recommendation for the assessors for the tax rate and the exemptions and the open space discount as to basically single? And yes or no on the exemptions as the recommendation?
Yes, I know if you want to, um, you know, for those at home, I did provide what a shift would look like if we did go to it. I know last year we did talk about it a little bit because of our commercial industrial and personal property base is a little bit higher. But in going through it all, um, there are still a significant amount of communities that don't shift the rate below thirty percent and even some above thirty percent that do. So there would be a slight difference for those. I don't know if you want to go to that or just kind of explain that. I'm not sure.
Uh, for me, I mean, I'm comfortable. I just wanted to know the, the, the over, the high level recommendations as in, you know, single, yes, yes, and no kind of recommendations. And then my other question on top of that would just be, is this online for anybody who wants to read it?
Yes, so the full packet of all the information is available online and I think we can add it to the assessors page as well. Directly from this information.
If there are at home can read what we have.
Yeah, and I think it's important that each year that, um, you know, looks at that, that's, and the first question is determining factor one, which is the single tax rate. So the Board of Assessors does still recommend that we stay with a single tax rate. And that's for question one. And then.
Oh, I'm sorry, Catherine.
And so the small commercial exemption, um, you know, I have a list of the communities that do it. It's really something that you would have to decide way in advance. So the answer would be no to that. And the residential, again, it's mainly in the city of Boston and down the Cape. So there's a lot of second homes that that's used. I do have the list of the communities that use it. Um, and open spaces, we really do the chapter land here, we don't. So, so the answer for two, three, and four from the Board of Assessors is to recommend no. And for, for one, it's really to recommend a single tax rate over, um, a split rate at this time.
Mr. Chair. And then obviously for discussion, but we can keep going. But I would move to adopt a single tax rate and no on the small commercial exemption, the residential exemption, and the open space discount. And if anybody wants a second, we can then go through everything or not second.
Do I motion?
For, for discussion? I, I think, um, I'm also in favor of a single tax rate personally. I mean, we were at this weekend, we were at, um, the grand opening of CrossFit.
Oh, yeah.
Brand new facility, brand new. Why, why would we, if we're, if we're hungry for economic development, why would we want to try to burden anybody? Or even announce that we're planning on burdening anybody in the future? It just doesn't, to me, it just doesn't make any sense. That's, that's my two cents on it.
That would be my, that would be the same comment for me. I just was going to say the same thing. Maybe somewhere in the future, we'll have completely opposite the split, you know, but not now. Not that we're trying to get all those people to come in and settle. It's our only way, you know, when we develop the Route twenty, there are possibilities.
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second. We're ready for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Yeah, easiest meeting that you've had in two weeks.
So, I, can we, so we're doing all, all the questions at one time and we're doing one at a time? We just did them all together? Okay. Unless you want to stay, did you want to stay longer?
We can go through them all. We've got all, let me.
We can extend your time.
So basically, your view for those at home, as David mentioned, if we're staying with a single tax rate and we are gonna allow any of the allowable exemptions for really very good reasons at this point. And again, but this is something that we have to do as a board every single year or so. As, as times change, as boards change, you know, again, we're, we're gonna have the same conversation next year. Who knows? Maybe it'll be different. I hope not, but you never know.
If we continue to grow, the businesses come, we will continue to reassess.
Right. And, and if, and if it's a large business, there's tough, there's gonna be other conversations around the tax rate anyway.
It's a very favorable way.
This really just, this, this is more of a, this would be more of an effect on medium small businesses more than it's.
I'm just out of curiosity, Avon, how long doing the split rate, you know?
Excuse me?
Avon, how long?
Does Avon have a split rate? Yeah, I do actually have that information. They, they've been trying to work back the other ways that they did it.
But they've had it for years.
They started in two thousand and eleven and they shifted it thirty-five percent in two thousand and eleven. And they're down to about fourteen percent now, but it's taking them that long to try to get back the other way. Because then you're shifting the burden back to the residences.
How do you do?
It's very difficult.
Right. Once you go one way to suddenly say, hey, by the way, we want to lower to increase economic development, but that means that we, that we're going, I'm sorry, that we, we, we want to decrease the, the commercial to increase economic development. But that means that you are now increasing residential and that never goes over well.
Yeah, the thirty-five percent was high and they're down to fourteen. You know, I think if we ever entertained it, maybe we'd shift it ten or something like, I think it's just too much.
I can promise as long as I'm on this board, I will always be, I'll be, I'm obviously.
I'm, I'm.
And. Granted, it's only two and a half years, but still, that's, I'm telling you.
We didn't report it on, but now we're all giving a reason.
No, I know, I know.
This is the Department of Revenue, so just this big white area here.
Yeah.
Kathy, do we all need to sign?
Uh, it's.
No, I mean, I don't care.
It's a big three of your annual sign. It says mayor, but you know, we don't have a mayor, so we should, we're gonna have to have.
We have the unofficial mayor of, of David's.
Well, then you should sign. As long as I get enough of them signed, I'm just gonna upload it to the Department of Revenue. So it was, um, definitely all kind of sided around.
When I was reading this, I was really surprised to see that our average home value was higher than Sturbridge. I, I, for years, I, for years, we've been watching this and it's kind of a, a little bit of a surprise. I didn't realize that, but.
That's why we can't use tax rate as a.
Did you put the tax rate in there or no?
I did put the tax rate in there, but thank you. But we do want to, um, you know, until it's finalized by the Department of Revenue, that it changes.
Always compare average tax bill.
Announce to those homes you want, or we can wait and it'll be revealed after the Department of Revenue.
It could change plus or minus if you have it in your packet.
Yeah, it could change by penny away until there's.
It gets the final say, just like free cash.
Yeah, let's wait.
Yeah.
I, I always look at this, I always look at this as a report card, by the way. It's, it's.
Tells you, it's, it's trying to tell you some information.
It's a tale of six cities, really.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, it was the best of some enforcement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, did you have a question?
I do. Um, I got a letter to be here today at seven o'clock for a variance for a shed.
Oh, different meeting? You're upstairs in the Board of Select room.
I'll, I'm going that way. I'll take you. And I'll explain that you were down here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Sorry.
Their meeting starts.
New business, Mr. Chairman. I, I can understand her confusion. I'm confused, wasn't it? Okay, new business. Winter wash sand bid award.
All right, so the winter wash sand bids were opened and read on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two at ten o'clock A M. Two bids were received from Hope of Construction in Mass Broken Stone. After review of the bids, D P W Superintendent Foskett has recommended the Board award the bid to Mass Broken Stone, a broken mast in the amount of twenty-one seventy-five per ton. Last year, award was also to Mass Broken Stone at eighteen twenty-five per ton. I recommend the Board award bid as requested.
A big bump up, but some of.
Second, I assume that was the low bid?
That was the low bid and they've actually, um, they've been weaning away from sand, so it's not the same impact as we had seen in prior years. So, um, you know, we're primarily salt. Uh, sand is kind of just that twenty percent additive at this point.
We have a motion and a second? No, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair says aye. It's passed.
Is the I M A for local public health services? So thanks to the effort of the Board Health Director, Jim Philbrook, the Town of Cheltenham was awarded Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant, which provides an annualized amount of three hundred thousand dollars to the Town of Cheltenham to, to support regional health coalition initiatives. As condition of the grant program, the town must enter into an I M A for local public health services with the participant communities. Cheltenham is the lead community in this initiative with C M R P C providing administrative and technical support. Board of Health has requested the Board of Selectmen execute the proposed I M A to proceed with this program.
Salute and well done to you.
Thank you.
And yes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair says aye. Veterans parking spot.
So I was approached by Pete and Seth from the Board of Health, asking if the Board of Selectmen would consider placing a veterans parking sign in front of the town hall. Uh, we would also be looking to place one on the side of the town hall by the senior center entrance. You have a, uh, two signs right here, asking what the wishes of the Board would be on this banner.
Special thanks to Pete. I think it's a great idea. Some, and Andrew, I'll, I'll bring it up to you to figure out where.
So move, Mr. Chairman, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition there. Thank you, Pete. Town meeting survey.
Right, so we may try to town meeting, they'll launch a survey available to town residents to gather feedback as to how to better draw attendance at town meetings. The survey asks residents to provide their views on factors that may limit attendance at meetings and ways to potentially incentivize attendance. The responses to the survey are attached. Uh, as outlined in the responses, we had a hundred and seven responses to the survey with some mixed results. Uh, some recommendations are not feasible due to legal restrictions on town meetings such as remote participation. Uh, changes at, changes to the time and date of the annual meeting would need to be amended at, at town meeting as they're set currently under Article fifteen of the Town Bible laws. In front of the Board, as to what your wishes are moving forward.
So, Mr. Chairman, basically a quick summary, the way I read it, was that one percent of registered voters took the survey. Approximately fifty percent of them, uh, are happy with the way that it is. And so that tells me that this was unfortunately statistically insignificant. And I have nothing in this data that shows me that we should, uh, make any change whatsoever at this point.
Chair, I agree with Mr. Borowski. With an almost fifty fifty split, the only potential outcome I see is making the change for the other half who want a change will come, but then we'll lose the half that already come and it's a wash. Also, if you go through the results, Mr. Borowski is right, seventy-five percent of them said they, they do attend, but with the, to me, the, the big question was really about the date and time. It is that convenient. And to Bill's point, with an almost fifty fifty split, it, it doesn't really even warrant going into the details of reasons that people provide. It's good for us to know and good for the public to know to be able to see the results. But with a fifty fifty split, I agree with, with Bill, I don't see any reason to make any changes.
It's almost better to make a controversial post like on Cheltenham Happening, you can have people start commenting so you can get like five hundred comments and up our, um, participation, but.
Patsy, to your, to your, to your point, Patsy, there, there were responses that, uh, people didn't know what was, was happening, what was going on about it, or didn't know about it. After all of the postings we do with the warrants, the signage, the reverse phone calls, emails, texts, the signs around town, uh, short of having a, the town prior door to door, I'm not sure what we can do to change some of those.
When people share all those, when someone finds a lost dog and like it gets shared like ten thousand times, we should make sure we add it to like the lost dog post or something.
So you're gonna steal someone's dog, bring it to town meetings and say, lost dog found at the school, pick it up. Still, it's pets.
Pets.
I.
That'll go over really reasonably.
Tie it up in the, in the town pound.
That'll go over, yeah.
Well, free kittens or something like that?
Free kittens. No, I mean, realistically, I mean, I know this is something we struggle with every year. I know we all complain about it online and at these meetings, but the reality is that enough, we've tried literally, I think, just about everything, except, except knocking on door to door to tell people about it. Don't forget, we sent a postcard to every single home in Cheltenham. And there was no, there was no significant uptick in attendance. In fact, one would argue that the Amazon first vote, which we did it, and, and they were publicizing. We only had, what, a hundred twenty-five, hundred fifty people then? That was about two. That was a twenty, yeah. Even that, that was like, again, it's just, again, so it's, I'm sure I'll, I will continue to rant about it for next two and a half years, but reality is I don't think anything's going to change. And if that's okay, that's okay. So, anyway, thank you for putting that back on, Andrew. It's good to like close the loop on these things.
So that was more informational. It's not a vote we need to take on this morning, just so we acknowledge. So Board of Selectmen, oh, A R P A funds.
So as part of the annual capital plan development and art updates of the plan, recent ARPA funds was also taken into consideration. Attached, I provided an updated request for the use of ARPA funds to complement the town's capital plan. The proposed plan will be five hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and eight dollars in unallocated funds to be considered for future appropriation prior to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, were the wishes of the Board.
Andrew, what number did you read?
Uh, it's a little different than the number that was in the memo provided. Uh, I had missed an article, I had missed one line as I was going back through and auditing the numbers, but it is five hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine oh eight, correct number. That's on the remaining balance of, um, the spreadsheet.
That's after everything on this list, fire, sewer.
After everything. Yep.
So. So where I was going with that was if we have a half million, could that then be used to offset any hit on taxpayers for some of the upcoming expenses we know are gonna face, like school roofs?
Yep. So what I did, um, as part of this is if you remember when, um, these, when, um, Yep. So what I did as part of this is if you remember when the, when the school district came in and presented their phase one capital plan, they had essentially two long, two borrowing articles. One was a five-year borrowing article and one was a fif, and essentially the roof itself was fifteen. The five-year is addressed under this D C R S D safety improvements. So that way, we wouldn't see a, say, ballooned payment for the first five years. It would take that down from, I think, eight hundred thousand to like six hundred thousand, essentially for those, for those five years. But yes, the five hundred and seventy-eight remaining could additionally be applied to that or really any other project that the board saw as a, a good reasonable use.
And Andrew, remind me, the F Y twenty twenty-three column, we haven't voted on, on any of those yet, haven't we?
No.
Right. So that's your proposal, basically.
Right, I mean, there are a few that, there are a few that have.
Yeah, there was the.
The radio system, the document digitization, which actually I bumped that number down from what was previously approved. And the, it's the ARPA fund administrative costs, the fire station feasibility, community center. And that, that was.
The business nonprofit.
Right, but that was, that was to date, those are, those are monies that have already been committed and spent.
Yeah, yeah.
Andrew, is this chart online?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to go and probably be contrarian on this one. I think we're spending too much money out of this that not, that is not going to the school roofs or the soon-to-be potential fire substation. I'd rather see, for example, the sewer headworks upgrade, didn't they just get a grant?
For some of them, they got a million. Essentially, what it's outlined here is that difference in, the difference in cost, this would fully fum that out, essentially paying the rate.
I would much rather, for example, some of that money out of that proposed seven hundred thousand, go towards the school roofs, knowing that we, that we literally have to pay for. Like, we don't have choice. I think a lot of this other stuff, even though it's important, is, I don't even want to call it discretionary, but I would rather see this go up to different votes. And knowing that we have to do the roofs at this point, put as much money as we can towards that, knowing we still have to find a way to come up with, again, I'm making something up, like two, like a two million dollar shortfall, that's going to have to come from the operating budget or a exclusion, which I don't want to do at this point. So I'll, I'll get off my soapbox, but, you know, Andrew, you did a good job on this and you did exactly what, what you're supposed to. But as one of five appear, I would much rather see a version of this that is heavily weighted towards paying for the roof. And then a lot of this other stuff, we're going to have to either put it to a vote at town meeting with free cash or come up with, with an override or debt exclusion or something on those lines, which I'm not happy about either. And I mean, I support it, but that's all I have to say on that because I, I could talk on this one hour.
Andrew, what, what did we, what did we already commit to the sewer?
What was, what was voted on at your last meeting was, or the last meeting you have at that was the two hundred thousand.
All right, so the five hundred thousand.
Right, so the five hundred thousand was essentially looking at twenty twenty-four.
Prior to then getting a million dollar grant or right around the same time.
Almost like a consideration of a million dollar grant that could get that whole project just done. Two hundred thousand essentially gets them to construction design development.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I agree with Bill, and this to me goes right back to the two hundred thousand dollars in grants that we gave away when we knew we had bills that we don't have a choice on. We have an opportunity here to save some of these funds still to apply toward expenses that are going to be not optional or not by choice to try and reduce any impact hit or effect on our taxpayers. Anything extra, please, I guess how Bill put it on here, the town meeting voters can say, okay, we want raised by taxation bar whatever to pay for this and for this and for this. But I'll use the same argument I used when I voted against getting out the two hundred thousand dollars for the grants. That money could have been used and this still can be used to prevent us or lower what we would have to ask taxpayers for, for things that are not optional.
Correct. But, but if you look at, so, but here we are now in November. So if you look at the sewer, twenty twenty-four, the five hundred thousand dollars and revenue replacement, which that was a, that was a new gig thrown in later on, way after we did the, the grants. Those two items alone are eight hundred thousand dollars. So now that brings, well, we've already spent the revenue replacement.
Right, so essentially what that did was just shift that money into free cash.
So we're really, we're talking a lot, some of the fifth, some of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three and, and the fiscal twenty twenty-four. Even though to Andrew's point, we've already done the radio system upgrades, we voted on that, right?
Right, and that, that bids out right now, I think by the beginning of December, we'll have, we may have a much better idea as to what that cost really will be. Really, that's a kind of a shot in the dark number right now.
Yeah, sure, right. I mean, for me, I'd, I'd make a motion, at least for discussion, that we have at least one point five million go towards, go towards the roof with preferably more, go, going, going towards the, the roof and the safety pieces that, that we voted in. But, and, and, and I'll take that. But again, that, that's just my motion for.
I'll second that. Do you want to make an actual dollar amount? But I don't think we can make a motion for, well, let's just spend a lot of money.
No, 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 well.
No, I'm saying.
No, I mean, no, we, but Bill, I can see how you can, you can still get to that number relatively easy.
Well, that's what I'm saying, at, at least one point five million needs to go to D C R S D safety improvements. I would prefer to see more, but at, but at a very minimum, one point five million would, would, would be my threshold.
So would that motion be to make the D C R S D line one point five million?
Ultimately, yes.
And then what would we take? Well, what are we going to reduce so that, because I think the motion would have to include where it would be reduced as well, correct?
No, I, I can come back to.
Yeah, I would actually want to have Andrew give recommendations. That's why I say, I mean, I would love to see more than one five, but at a minimum.
Why would we go down to one point five? Why wouldn't we just allocate it and cover, and cover the majority of the roof?
I mean, honestly, we, we could. Well, except for the fact that we've already done the radio system upgrades. So, you know, that's a big piece.
Yeah, you get to think about it. But also, even like fire rescue one, I mean, Amazon's going to buy one of those.
So really, what that is, is that when we negotiated the deal with Amazon, you know, they, we, we negotiated a, a number, you know, it was six hundred and fifty thousand. Essentially, what's happened to the cost of pretty much everything is it's gone up twenty-five percent in the last two years. So this is so that way we didn't, you know, essentially could still get that done without having to go back to the taxpayers to take the.
So Andrew, do you want to just put this on for the next meeting?
Yeah, that's easy enough for the, for the sewer.
But again, that was my motion. I don't know if there was a second or.
The motion is to, is to reevaluate and come back.
With, with a minimum of one point five.
Okay, I second it.
All right. All, all in favor of that?
Yeah. Aye.
Chair says aye.
But Andrew, you, you did, you did exactly what you're supposed to do.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Board of Selectmen Policy Committee Reports. Committee Reports, hearing done? Seeing done, hearing done? Board of Selectmen Policy Review.
Nothing, but I will have stuff for your next meeting, going to be reviewed by me.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. Board of Selectmen and T A goals and objectives.
People outside of this, aren't they, until, until you're vetoed? Didn't they have one?
Town, yes.
It's basically the same, plus like economic development, like, no, that'd be.
The budget.
The, 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 the budget for the, whatever.
Town Administrative Report.
All right, so license renewals, those have been sent out. The board is scheduled to take action on the renewals at your December thirteenth meeting. Really, I want to thank Mary for all of her hard work and coordinating the effort. She does a great job each year and she's right on top of it, all the applicants, so thank you to her for, for all the work with that. Flood plane map update, so the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation is currently working on their FEMA flood map update for the Quinne Bog watershed. As a part of the process, Charleston will be to adopt new flood maps at the annual town meeting in twenty twenty-three before the effective date of the maps, so the town's status in the National Flood Insurance Program remains active. I'll be working with Town Planner Randy Benson to prepare this information for them. Route twenty construction, Mass D O T is scheduled to hold a pre-construction meeting on Route twenty reconstruction project beginning at Richardson Square through Oxford on November twenty-second. And information that's from that meeting will pass on to the board. I'm trying to make as much public information as we can on the website. I also today had a discussion with our website provider. Next month, we're going to start the process of redesign for our website. So hopefully meet that goal of providing a better service through that lens. And also through Terps, the new marijuana recreation facility, they are scheduled to open this Friday.
Are we going to do a ripping that? Did we decide?
They was at the discretion of the board. They were more or less like, we can put something together if you guys want, but we're fine with it.
Their, their grand opening is A D M on Friday.
I, we do it for everybody else.
I mean, if people show up, that's great.
But, but do we have, even at, I was impressed when, because the Chamber of Commerce, was the county Chamber of Commerce with her, and she had that big, long, gold set of scissors. Do you have, do you have gold scissors that long?
No, I wonder who that is now. I went to Auburn for, it was a real tea grand opening, a couple of state representatives there. And it's the same thing, but big red handled scissors. I'm like, where'd you get these?
She had it, I don't know if she sealed it, she was like.
All places sells like big clown shoes and everything else, right, that's oversized. Up the board, but.
But that, that just came out today. We're absolutely sure they're going to do it Friday morning.
They, they basically said they could coordinate something for Friday. They just received the word from, from the Canvas Commission that they can open Friday. It was more or less like, we're not going to put a grand opening on if nobody's going to show up.
Right, but they are opening, that's controlled by the C C C, they don't have a choice. They actually have to give the C C C very specific date, time, everything, or when they're going to open or they violate. So they will be open, it's just whether this board wants to do, what's done for every other.
If people, if people want to show up at eight, show up at eight. If not, no. I mean, again, I think we're a complicated.
Where you're just basically letting them know a few representatives of the board may stop by, but maybe you don't put any.
If they do, that's better.
So what again?
Other business unknown at Town Posting, next meeting announcement?
Are we doing a?
So I have a meeting on Thursday. I am out of the office on Monday, and then we have Thanksgiving, and then it's the next Tuesday. So I don't foresee anything coming up that's going to require the board's action. I think we can just plan on December regularly.
And then if we need a Zoom special meeting, we can always do it.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, is that number six? No, the thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah.
Thirteen. But if we need some type of emergency Zoom meeting or approve something, that's clear.
Or if you miss, if you miss each other, you can.
Yes, yeah, trust me, that could happen. Hi, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session under M G L, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Number two, to conduct strategy sessions of preparation negotiation with non-need personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-need personnel. And Number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. Executive session minutes, P pass discussion, highway union, T A contract. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or the decision of the public body in the chair, so declare it, and we can be into open session if needed. Andrew, adjourn.
That's clear. Chairman, all in favor? We are in executive session.
Sorry, speaking.
We, oh, roll calls.
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
David? Chair says aye. So thanks, Jim.